I call this meeting to order. This is a special Commissioners Budget Workshop meeting on March 1st, 2023, in Commissioner's Meeting Room. Go call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Here.
Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Deputy Director Yardley?
Here.
Three, moment of silence and a sweep of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four is our public statement pursuant to the open public meetings act, chapter 231, P L 1975. At a quick notice has, as the section 3B of chapter 231, P L 1975, has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on February 23rd, 2023, from the administrative center of the county of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald, New Jersey Sunday Herald. And is also posted on the bulletin board, maintaining administrative center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with the Act. Number five is a full agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So will.
Commissioner Hayden, can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Staying? Carrie? Number six is executive session. We have none. Number seven is proclamations, certificates, presentations. There is none. Number eight, public hearings. There is none. Number nine is the public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Motion to open the floor to the public.
So moved.
Commissioner Space? Second. Commissioner Fantasia? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Staying? Carrie? Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a statement? All right. I get a motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Staying? Carrie? Number 10, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hayden, you want to start? Do you have anything?
I think we're here to talk about the budget tonight.
We are.
So we'll talk about the budget when we get to that.
Perfect.
Okay, next.
Commissioner Space?
Yep.
Commissioner Fantasia?
I do not.
I have nothing either. Twelve is approval of minutes. There is none. Thirteen appointments and a resignation. Resignations? There is none, even though we lost Terry today.
Yeah.
But I guess that resignation was already put through.
Yeah.
That's a retirement.
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 Retirement. Fourteen resolutions. There is none. Fifteen words of contract change orders bid. There is none. Sixteen is financial 2023 budget review. I'm not sure how to start this. I mean, I know how I would like to start it. You pretty much went over everything in our last meeting, where we were at, where we were coming from. We just were undecided on what percent we wanted to be at individually. So, I mean, I guess what I would like to ask everybody is, we're at one point, what exactly are we at, first of all? Okay. Does anybody in favor of that before we start? Did we want to get, I know Herb and Dawn were not. We're looking to move some stuff around. Why don't we just start there then? So Herb, where do you want to see the budget? Are you good with that?
I'd like to see if we can get it lower.
What's your number?
Well, first of all, there's money coming out of Mike's budget. Has he been contacted?
Nope.
Okay. So that triggers an immediate no vote on the budget. Just so that you know, since he has not been contacted and he needs to be talked, he needs to be talked about.
Absolutely.
There is not money coming out of his budget. Now, that was a proposal. And the proposal was, we located a couple of things to have the discussion with him, to see if he was in agreement.
Yeah.
It's not, we are doing this. We would never, specifically to a constitutional officer, ever take money out of a budget and not have that conversation.
So then why is that on the table if there wasn't a conversation with him?
I mean, why is it on the table?
Did we have the conversation?
I'm sorry?
Did we have the conversation?
We had the conversation about the overtime. We had the conversation about the grant for, but we can't apply the grant monies because we won't know if we get the federal grant monies until after April. So the conversation, which I discussed with Chris, which will be discussed with Ron further, is to have the discussion to outline the timeline of the past two years, the amount of overtime that was not used significant compared to what was used. That is the conversation to be had with the sheriff. It's not, nobody is voting this evening. Nothing is up for introduction this evening. So please, don't get this twisted, Mr. Yardley.
Thank you. It's a simple question. You've been in a conversation with the sheriff about removing money from this budget?
Conversation has not taken place, but I assure you it will, as it did with our county clerk and our surrogate. And we're going to give them that respect as we should. So where are we at then, Herb?
Let's see what the rest of everybody has to say first.
Okay. Commissioner Fantasia?
Well, again, we had conversations. If we wanted things cut, we were supposed to find them. We don't come up here and say a magical number and play politics. We come up here and actually find things, which is the purpose of the meeting. And so I'd like to know, I know Ray reached out today, if you have any pertinent information to share with the board.
I guess nothing really new. I just want, you know, the mechanics of how the budget and the rate and the increase all come together. And I think to be fair to all of you, to be able to comparatively look at other counties and how they're doing comparatively, I think it's, I want you all to understand how that all works, right? So there's a levy, and then that levy is applied to equalize value to get to what you have to charge taxpayers to get to the levy. And so each year that assessed value or the value that you're charging to changes. It changes by new ratables coming in, but it also changes by an inflationary value. And I think to be comparative, you should look at that number as a whole and what that changes. So when you're looking at what's happening to the rate, your rate is actually dropping. So there's a 9% decrease in the rate. So I want you to understand that comparatively, if you look at other counties to what's happening with the rate compared to what's happening to their rate, the rate, your county tax rate is increasing. Now, there is an increase in levy, but what that's being applied against is increasing, and there's actually an increase in the rate. So I want you all to be able to understand. Because the way that you look at it, just at the, what the new construction is, I want to, it's not misleading, but it's a very specific way to look at it and a very conservative way to look at it. If you look at it on a broader scale, taking into account inflationary increase, the rate is actually increasing. So you're looking at a 1.5% increase if you're just basing it on new construction. But if you're looking at it compared to other counties, that's how they look. And I know that. So when you're, when you're actually looking at the rate decreasing, which is a very, I do it every day, so I understand it, but you're seeing a tax levy increase and a tax rate decrease, which is not, I would, I would imagine that most people would be able to have that possible. But it's really due to the new construction and the inflationary increase that's occurring in the county. New rateable. It's a good thing. Housing, your housing market is doing well and increasing in value, and there's new construction. People are building on it. And that's one of the very good things that are assisting this budget and affecting the tax rate in a way that it doesn't make sense. The tax rate is decreasing. And I want you all to be aware of that.
But additional spending is raising the levy, or additional costs?
Yes. Costs always drive the levy.
Of course. So at the end of the day, that, you know, for us and for budgeting purposes and for health of the county purposes, that is good news, that aspect. What's bad news for the taxpayers is that the levies increasing.
I would say everybody's levy is increasing because everybody's costs are going. Inflation's 8%. There's no government in America right now that's moving. Costs are going. Taxes are going. The levies are going down. As a matter of, is, is your, are your ratables and is your growth keeping up with that? And yours is. Your growth was actually more than what you need, than you cost it, which is why the rate is going down. Right? The growth of your pie is growing. The pieces of that pie that you're using have gone to your costs. Going down. Very difficult concept to understand and to make sense of it, right? How could the rate be going down? But that's, that's what happens, I would say, to all of us. There is a lot of ratable growth here. The housing market was very good for the last year. People were building quite a bit the past year. So there is a lot of ratable growth, but there's also a lot of expense increases that people are at.
So can I ask you, Commissioner Director, again, where have, from each individual commissioner, where have those things been found? Where?
That's kind of why we're here. Commissioner, to figure that out, I'm not sure. I know Bill.
So I went through the budget, and there were a couple of things that stood out. It shows here 2020 adopted budget, 2020-23 proposed budget. In the book, it shows another line that's not here, and that's what was used. And what I saw across the board was, what was used was never what the 2022 adopted was, meaning we never went all the way up to what that was. Meaning, why, in many cases, did the proposed jump? We didn't even use it last year. That's a question I've got. Some of it.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. So that's a question. Like, say, for instance, libraries. They had a budget of X. They didn't use near what it was. We have six libraries. Libraries are like going the way of the dodo bird. There is certain things we can cut. And then we would lose the operating expense of a couple of buildings. And we would still be able to fully staff because you wouldn't have to cut any staff. Fully staff the remaining ones.
You're saying that you want to cut libraries?
Cut libraries. Go, fine, go through these.
Seven to like five, is that what you're saying?
Seven to four.
Seven to four. Okay.
But go through these. I mean, if, say, and I didn't write them all down, but say if land use was 261 budgeted and they only used 100, and now we're giving them 313, well, why are we giving them X? Is it because they need employees? Or did the job get done with the amount of employees they had? And if that's the case, then why are we going to add more? I mean, the taxpayers are hurting, and now we're going to put more of a burden on them when we have the ability to cut.
Now, I'll defer to Elka. Just on that note, though, I know with the DPW, they're down so many.
They're down so many.
But, but, just hear me out. So they can't even do their jobs.
No, and I didn't say I get that.
Just hear me out. So if we don't have those employees, so it's, I'm going to assume that the same thing will happen with the libraries. They're getting by, but they're not doing, they're getting by by the skin of their teeth. They're not doing anything more than that. Now, I don't go and visit the libraries like I do with the DPW, but that's what I'm thinking. But let Elka, you know, answer the question if you could.
So the book that, that book was created in September.
Okay.
So the year-to-date that you're seeing of what was spent in 2022 was up through September. So it's missing three months worth plus the get expenses in the first two months, two, three months of this year for things that, utilities and other costs that haven't come in yet. They're becoming, like your last December bill, people come in January. They might be encumbered, so they could show up in December. So that's part of that. As far as the library, if you cut the library, it doesn't affect the front fund market because it's two steps back.
No, I know, I get that. I'm just saying, these are things in the future that need to be looked at. And so basically, I got a budget that I was looking at that was bad data.
Well, the data, it's the recommended data, and.
But you're saying the.
Aware that that's what it's printed, because you know it's what you're looking at, the recommended.
Okay.
So if you compare it to the financials that we sent, that's where you can see the urgency that I have.
So just to clarify for everybody here, I know in Frankfurt, I think our library tax is 1.69%. Is that about right? You live in Frankfurt, somewhere around there. So that's its own separate tax.
I get that.
So it's not going to affect this budget, though? You know what I mean?
Well, those employees are listed in the budget?
But it's their own budget. It's, it's coming out of that 1.69% that you pay on your tax dollar.
Okay.
I mean, listen, if you want to propose getting rid of libraries, I mean, that's going to be a tough one to sell. I know, just by being here and talking about libraries, you know, people use them a lot, especially the seniors use them a lot. I mean, I don't know how many numbers. Elka actually would know that because she's in charge, but I know Frankfurt Library, when over there, is 25,000 visitors over there?
No, but I think that should be on this full report that you're presenting.
So you guys started this in September. What I was going through in that book, three days over the weekend, was data from September.
Would it have been spent?
Would it have been sent?
Would have been spent.
Anything else?
I have a question. I talked to Ron about the Health Department, and they have suspended some of the programs. So do they need all the staff?
That's a conversation we have to have with Jennifer. I don't know if that, again, like, was that an effect of COVID? Have they got back to normal yet? I don't know. I don't know where did this, what he's talking, what Commissioner Yardley's talking about is that when you get a new septic system or a replacement septic system, you get an architect that puts the stamp on the design, you get the installer who certifies they put it in right, and then, you know, in between all that, we used to have health inspectors that would go and give the county seal of approval of that. So at this point, they don't seem to be doing that process right now. So that's a conversation I've got to have with Jennifer.
And staffing levels?
The staffing level stayed as flat as I know it has. They haven't moved the staffing level because they haven't done that function. That's a conversation we have to have with her as the new health officer. It might be something they reinstate. I don't know. I don't know why they cut it off in the first place.
So if you could move two people, that's another $100,000 or more.
Move people or?
Not, if you don't need, say, two people.
Understood.
And I don't know whether they're at full staffing or not right now. So that may be an option.
So, so I guess here's my problem I'm having with already. We, we had our workshop last week. We gave everybody another week to figure out what they wanted to do, and yet we're back here again asking the questions that should have been asked through this week. Right?
I think so.
So, I mean, I guess we're unprepared is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it looks like me getting the thing quite ready.
And you didn't know this? That, that book's been in there since November 3rd. That book has been in there. That is a wish list. I think you've been told many times that that's what that was.
I didn't have it. And I told you that in text. I have those texts.
You can have any text you want. Again, anything you needed. If you needed something today.
Why don't you throw it up to the vote?
Elka's here. Ron is here. Again, it's like another wasted week because nobody can get their stuff together. You can sit in an office and count on your fingers, but at the end of the day.
I told you my concerns. I told you my concerns. We have vacancies that we won't need to fill. Obviously, the DPW is so short, they have to be filled. And I've said that before.
What makes you think another spot would in?
Have we had any kind of complaints from constituents that things weren't getting done?
I would think so, yes.
Are they enumerated? Show me where they are. Do we have complaints?
I mean, I'm sure there's plenty of complaints.
Well, you asked me about data and what I want. Now I'm asking you, you have it. Ron must have it then, right? We could get it and then see where we need to cut.
We would have to go to department heads. And, and this is, again, being prepared for this meeting. Is you want to cut, you have it, I guess that you have an explanation how we can cut it.
I figured this was a budget workshop. This is the kind of.
There's two things about headcount. One is not filling current vacancies. That's one thing. But it's assumed for a minute the Health Department is fully staffed. And you were saying that we don't need two people. That turns into a layoff process. And in civil service, you're 90 days at best, if you do everything perfect, to result in those savings of those two people because of the time it takes to create a layoff plan, the timing that the state takes to approve it, the timing that you have to have the state to tell you which two people are going to go. At best, it's 90 days. So you wouldn't see anything until July. If we did, if we launched today on any type of layoff plan, it gets savings from not having as many employees.
Very good point.
Now, not filling current vacancies, that's obviously a much easier discussion. You're not affecting lives in that, in that manner. But you talk about getting rid of people that are here. That's a very long-term situation.
I'm just looking at not filling vacancies.
You just don't get immediate results from it.
So again, these are all discussions that need to go back to the department heads. Commissioner Yardley, at this point, obviously, you would never take, using the constitutional officers as an example, you would never say, oh, we're just, we're not filling these. We're just not filling these, and let's not tell them, and let's pull. It's asinine and ludicrous. So in these budgets, we have reached out to the constitutional officers. We reached out to, Chris, you reached out to Gary. There's nothing there. Reached out to Jeff. There's nothing there by way of vacancies or things to be filled. The question, you know, Strata has saved this county a significant amount of money with how he's restructured, but we need to ask him and have the conversation. There's nothing wrong with having the conversation and looking at a budget and saying, hey, this is the amount of overtime, but it's not being used. These are the positions being filled. Can it be done with A, B, C, D? These are conversations that we do, and that's called good government and good governance. So those are the conversations that need to be had, I suppose, as Herb said, with the health, you know, with the head of the Health Department to say, you know, are there vacancies? How is that impacting our constituent services here? You know, the.
I know they're down three registered health officers or specialists, but I don't know about anything about inspectors or any of that. They're down three people there.
And library, for instance, are they budgeted for additional staff? And are they unable to man it? Because again, you know, Pennywise, a town foolish. I remember in Franklin, the overtime dance, where, you know, people were adamant and digging in about not hiring an additional police officer, yet when you looked at the overtime budget, it was off the charts. So, you know, let's not be foolish there either. Let's take a look at what that piece looks like.
Commissioner Space, anything?
Yeah, so 1.62. As a business owner, I'm going to look at it from a business perspective. If someone said to me that my budget was going to go up 1.62%, I'd be thrilled. I'm probably looking at more than 8% inflation with my business. So, you know, I feel like we've done our due diligence. You know, you can go to Mike Strata and cut from the public safety, but I don't know if I'm comfortable with that, not understanding enough of public safety, not being the sheriff myself.
Which is why it has to be left, honestly, to him and a conversation with him and about what his recommendation is as well. You know, what if it's presented and he says, well, it can't come from there, it should not come from there, but there's A, B, C, D where it might be able to come from. I mean, we're not doing our due diligence.
We just had the CWA contract, 14% increase in our health insurance. I think that we've picked apart this budget pretty good. That's just my.
Pinching one up?
Oh, no doubt. Costs are through the, look, we're, you know, we're still not magicians. But the way I've always looked at it ever since I've been in offices, it ain't my money. I'm one of 144,000 people, you know, that live here. And when you look at the households and the taxpayers, right? Plus the math, families, majority. But at the end of the day, it's not my money to cavalierly spend. So if we don't turn over every possible stone, and I understand Chris's frustration. Elka's turned over every stone five times. You know, and Ray, I'm not even going to say how many stones.
Yes, and thank you, Elka.
You know, and, and Ron, I get that, and the whole board and the whole process, right? Herb and I on capital, went through every single thing. Our, our point was always ARPA, ARPA, ARPA. What can be covered under those six categories? What does not come out? And, and it worked. Our capital budget, we're very fortunate for that because, again, we're borrowing half, about $5 million less this year because we were able to go through that, you know, with the professionals. But what would our timeline be now? Like, let's talk seriously. What, how does this affect our timeline with these suggestions, with these conversations? And Ron, I could talk to you a little bit more about some of the things that I found, some of the ideas that I have, you know, prior to a conversation with Sheriff Strata. Perhaps Herb could talk to you about, you know, the Health Department coming from his expertise. Public safety is not my expertise, but again, in looking through from our prior discussion. And what would our timeline be to have those discussions? Have any potential revisions put in for the board's review and consideration?
I think what the, my immediate response to that is we're going to be behind the curve. And I'm not trying to talk about this to try to rush this. It's not the intent. I just know what we're up against, against the state and the application process of introducing a budget. The later we go, the later we are in line to get it approved by the state. And the further you get into that process, the further the back of the line you get. I'll lean on Ray a little bit on that, but that's, that's been my experience. If you don't introduce shortly, you're going to get in a cycle with everybody else introducing, and we become, at the end of the table, the later we go with that. That's just the caution to the wind, if you will, of, of introducing budgets. State's only got so many people at the seat that will go through your budget and give it a box check. And we can't do anything until the state does that. We can propose, they may have things in our budget they may want us to look at. They may not be an automatic box check. We don't know until we get it there. We do our best diligence to do that, but.
In, in looking at it forensically, and Ray might know this, you know, a little better because I know Ron, you were here and then you just came back, how many times has the state or Elka kicked it back to us?
Have you heard the state have comments? And there is research to be done and set back against them.
To satisfy what their inquiry might be? Okay.
So to what Ron was discussing is as we get further back and more people introduce their budget, the state reviews a third of all municipalities plus every single county. And we have a finite amount of people to do all that work. I know two of my municipalities have already been produced, and two more have been done. So you're still towards the front of the line.
I presume that the, because I know that municipalities are on that three-year cycle. So anybody who's on that three-year cycle is throwing it in right away, and the municipalities that are not on the three-year cycle can kind of kick back a little bit if it's not their year.
And so there have been times, I think in the past few years, where a budget introduction was at 7:00 at night, and they got us back their notes at noon. And in order for us to control the adoption, we had to satisfy all of their answers between noon and 7:00. So thankfully, you know, everybody on your professional side does a nice job. Usually, the questions are pretty minor, just clarification points. But there could be the potential for we get a phone call at noon saying, hey, we haven't looked at your budget. And you can have a hearing tonight, but we can't. And that, as it happened to the other municipalities last year, it was too late. We did not get through reviewing budget within a month's time.
So then what, what is the practical application then here in the county? What needs to be done under those circumstances when it's not to the fault of your own and the state simply doesn't have the manpower to do that?
So you would hold your hearing that, that night? Would you adopt the budget? So now you don't have an adopted budget. You have to wait until you give your formal approval. And you point you adopt it unless you advertise immediately.
For the daily notes and bolts, then, Elka, what, how does that then affect our ability to move forward with daily operations?
After the resolution, it's emergency temporary.
And those resolutions cost the county money to do extensions. I mean, every time we do a resolution, it needs to be legal review. Is there anything, any additional cost to the county for having to do that? There is not. So it's time. It's man hours, basically, and an extra step. But there's no, no horrific impact will befall the county should that be the case?
Within the statutory window.
Within the.
First meeting after March 31st.
Okay. I'm not suggesting that we do that. I'm wondering, A, will it cost us more? Will it be punitive? Because to be honest, I'd rather get it right than worry about that, you know, as long as there's not a financial penalty to the county.
I'll say this, if if you don't come to a decision tonight to move forward, it would be nearly impossible to introduce this budget next month. That's what they, Elka would have. There's, your budget is very big, there's a lot that goes into it, Elka would have to prepare all that, and then I would have to review all of it. So and then you're going to have to get back to the clerk to advertise. I know it sounds like a lot of time to do that. It's just not, it would be very difficult for the professionals.
We'd have to advertise, like, within a couple of days.
Right. So really, we'd have to have the budget thoroughly completely reviewed following the ride in of this week. So if there is no decision to move forward tonight, I would say we will start introducing the budget.
So not the eighth, the 22nd? Understood.
What point would we have to put an adoption for another extension to the temporary budget?
All right, well, I'll just say that I think everybody up here would love to cut taxes. But obviously, in the circumstances that we have, I don't see that happening, just to realize. We worked really hard on keeping our employees that we have, because a lot of them were underpaid. We worked really hard on that, and we got that accomplished. Now, we got to keep them here. And I guess it goes back to, you know, we're weak and we're in the same spot that we were earlier. That drives me crazy, number one, because I like to get things done. Number two, because we work hard on this stuff, and I feel like everybody works hard. And then there's that Monday morning quarterback. That drives me up a wall. I can handle a 1.6 myself, 1.62, because I understand, as Ray pointed out, you know, where we're at. Inflation, great negotiation, horrible insurance, and everybody has that problem across the county, across the state. So I I guess we're not going to move forward again. Very, very disappointed, really am. Because I thought that everybody would have an idea to cut, and that we could figure that out and say, Elka, if we do this, can we get to this point, 1.20, whatever your plan was, and we could have went back and said, now it's, here's an idea. Here's an idea. So, Bill, you've been here for 60 days, sworn in. Herb, you've been here for longer than me. Again, you had ample time to look at this stuff. You have Elka, you have Christina, you have Ron. Ray had a phone call away. Again, we're sitting here wasting more time. So if we're not going to do anything, there's nothing I can do to force you to say what you want, you know? You you heard everybody, Herb. I mean, is there anything you want to add to that? Nothing. So we're just, we're just playing politics here. Okay. All right, well, I guess that's it. I don't even know where to go. I really don't even know where to go. Okay, then I'll ask that next question. How long do you need to figure out what you you want to propose or kind of get things ready?
Next meeting, I guess.
Next meeting? Commissioner Fantasia? Commissioner Spacey?
I was good.
Commissioner Hayden?
I think we need to go back to the department heads and see of those people that are not there, how many they really need.
Well, you'll have this, if, next Wednesday, next week. So you'll have a week. So anything, again, so everybody understands. Anybody needs anything, you could ask Elka, Ray, or Ron. Make sure you have the right book and the information. They can sit with you. Whatever you need, that is priority. So whatever you need, get it done, please.
That's fine. I asked about the 5 and 10% cuts earlier, and he said we couldn't do them.
And Ron, I gave you that answer at our last meeting. He said he did that. He asked, he did what he asked.
I didn't see any, so listen, here's the way I see it. If you're telling me that, I'd like to see it in writing, in an email to me. I did not get that email. I would like to see that in writing, so I have it so I could say, well, this is what was told to me. It's not hearsay.
So so going forward, verbal is not good enough for Commissioner Hayden. You'll have to put that in writing. Right? Is that correct?
On budget items? Yeah. I want to see it in black and white.
Okay, so I guess next week is, you know, hopefully, people reach out to you and, you know, get what they need done. All right, we're off that topic. Seventeen personnel, there's none. Eighteen administrative reports. Any more small business loans come in?
We had three, we had three since the last meeting, last meeting.
So we're up to a tally of.
Oh, my. Just shot 40.
Forty-five.
Forty.
I thought it was up to 45.
Forty-five, something like that. That's in the queue. That's still in approval cycle.
Around about a half a million dollars.
Yep. We're, we've dispersed 328,000.
Any first aid squads or fire departments yet?
Haven't seen them, no.
Don't they fill for it?
They're not, they can't.
I've been like begging them.
Yeah, right. They can. Why aren't they?
I don't remember one coming through the process at all. Okay.
Okay. That's great. Per department or company?
Per volunteer department.
Right, okay.
So I think there's 41, so we're going to have them for that fire boarding, unless they're volunteers. I'll play the criteria for this. Can we get them reviewed?
Okay, sounds good.
We're thinking that we would give them what, that they can lie, and then they give us a quote, and then we can click the whatever.
Perfect.
All right. Good, you're good.
I'm good.
Nineteen, County Council?
Nothing.
Nothing? Thank you, Commissioner. Twenty unfinished businesses. Anybody have any unfinished business? Anybody have any new business? No? Number 22 is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less, on non-agenda topics. Please line up with the microphones, state your name, municipality for the record. Got a motion to open the floor for.
So moved.
Commissioner Spacey, second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Propose, stand, carries. Is there anyone else that wants to? All right. Seeing none, got a motion to close the floor for public comment returning to regular business. I'll leave. Commissioner Hayden, second.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose, stand, carries. Twenty-three, reminders, there is one. Number 24, adjournment. Got a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, second.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, stand, carries. Meeting is adjourned at 6:39.